Well, I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's council meeting. Before we get started, I guess I would just like to take a couple of minutes to acknowledge a couple of things. Number one, that this has been a rather difficult last few days, especially for those people that live in Houston and that area, and more recently, the people that live in the whole state of Florida. And I realize that there's not much that we can do individually to help them out of the difficult situations that they're in, except to send them our prayers and our best wishes. So I think I can probably speak on behalf of council saying that our city council sends out our prayers and our good wishes, as well as those of the citizens of our community, and hope that they're able to get back on their feet really soon, and that Jose chooses to go another way. And then also, just to acknowledge that year sixteen has rolled around, and for lots of families that lost loved ones in 9/11, I'm sure that the pain and grief of that loss has not diminished one little bit. So it's important that we remember. All right. The first item on tonight's agenda is that of the consent agenda. It's a group of items to be acted upon in a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and at that time, either the public or a council member may request that an item be removed prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include: approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of August 22, 2017; approval of the expenditure vouchers of September 12, 2017; approval of a renewal tavern liquor license for Destination Grail; the approval of a renewal tavern liquor license for Purple Sage Reb Company; the approval of a renewal pub, a brew pub liquor license for Wild Edge Brewing. It seems hardly possible that a year's gone by since they break your last. The approval of a special event permit for Cortez Referral Source. The approval of a, and that's so that they can have a meet and greet on Wednesday, September 20. Extra realty, the approval of a special event permit for Southwest Memorial Hospital. Their hospital foundation is wanting to host Right at the Ancients events on September, Sunday, pardon me, Sunday, October 8, from 6:00 to 6:00 at Park de Vida. And approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce, so that they can have business after hours at Earl's Funeral Home. So at this time, is there anybody in the audience, or anybody in council that would like to pull any of those items? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition of $43,630.15.
Second.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
All right, we have no presentations. At this juncture, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak before council? All right. In that case, we'll, public hearings. Resolution number 18, series 2017. Niva.
Okay. This was a relatively simple project. I'm here to present a two-lot minor subdivision submitted by owners Bill and Joanne Tietzel. The city received an application to create a two-lot minor subdivision at 610 and 614 North Broadway. The properties are located on the southeastern corner of Empire and Broadway. The property at 610 North Broadway is just over 13,000 square feet, and the property at 614 North Broadway is 15,680 square feet. The proposed subdivision will create Lot A at 6,800 square feet on the northern portion of the property, and combine the remainder of the parcel located at 614 with the parcel located on 610 as Lot B, for a 21,945 square foot lot. The city intends to purchase Lot A from Mr. and Mrs. Tietzel for the purpose of locating a city gateway sign on site. The gateway signage was of priority identified through the Heart and Soul Project, and the city finally has the means to have that gateway sign realized. Lot A will be accessed off of MacArthur Avenue via the alley located to the east of the parcel. This lot will not need continuous access due to it being the location of a gateway sign. Lot B is vacant, with the exception of a building slated for demolition, which I believe may have been completed over the weekend, and that lot will be accessed off of MacArthur Avenue. Neither lot will have access off of Highway 491. Again, this was just a minor subdivision. There are no new streets, roads, extensions, or access easements that needed to be dedicated. Utilities will not need to be extended at this time, though if they do, the utilities are immediately adjacent to Lots A and B. The size of the lot exceeds the minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet for commercial zoning. The minor subdivision process has not been utilized for this subdivision. And as per usual for our projects, this went out to all of the utility and affected special districts. The comments we received, there were no issues with the project, except CDOT wanted to reiterate that no access would be allowed off of 491, which is not a problem, since there is access off of MacArthur. And there is a fiber line running through both of the lots that, the fiber company has not been identified yet. As soon as it is, we will need to pursue an easement for that fiber line. Other than that, the project has no issues. Staff does recommend approval of the Tietzel two-lot minor subdivision.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
I don't have any.
Bill, would you and Joanne like to?
I'm here.
Okay. Didn't know whether you wanted to add to that or not.
I have actually a point I want to make.
Yes, would you please? You need to state your name and your address, please.
We've been working on this idea for a while, the idea of entryways, and I think it's important for the city council to understand that we consider the residual lot, the one that we're going to keep, kind of part of this concept of an entryway for the city. So we're not going to go put it on the market and sell it right away. We're going to come up with an appropriate use that reflects kind of as well as a part of this gateway or entryway. So in that respect, you know, for the money and material you're going to be putting into it, I think you can feel safe that you're not going to see a used car lot or something develop on top of it. So just, I think that might make you feel better.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll open it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody present that would like to speak for or against? To speak for or against? And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. If there are no other questions or comments by council?
Two-lot minor subdivision, as submitted by owners Bill and Joanne Tietzel, through the council, resolution number 18, series 2017, with the four conditions outlined above, and authorize the mayor to sign the plaque.
Second.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheik. Aye. All right. We have no unfinished business at this time, so we'll move on to new business. Rick, the Empire Electric.
I need to recuse myself for this discussion.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
I'll sit in the crowd and listen.
Yes. They both work for Empire Electric, so. You almost have to get up really fast in order to... All right. Rick, now.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, in 2016, the city entered into a pole attachment agreement with Empire Electric to install fiber optic lines around town. Earlier this year, we installed cable on the power lines along County Electric's poles along East Main Street, and by, also by the golf course. Upon making the application, Empire Electric informed us that we needed to execute a new pole attachment agreement. And attached, for your reference, is the new agreement. The new agreement has some increases in the yearly pole fee and clarification on the process to get a pole permitting. The pole attachment fee, Exhibit E, is increasing from $11.72 per pole per year to $14.10, $2.38 increase. The permit fee of $25 per pole remains the same. Make-ready cost on any poles is on a pole-by-pole basis, just for your FYI. That's really about it.
All right. Counsel, does anyone have any questions?
I do. Does it, Rick, does a $2.38 increase seem substantial to you? A little high? Is that, how do they justify $2.38 per pole, as well as leaving the $25 per pole permit fee? I guess I'm having trouble clarifying that for myself. You have a $25 per pole permit fee, and you raise your per pole per year to 14.10.
Ty, I promised Shane that he's laughing at me. I told him I'd be a good boy tonight.
No, I'd rather you not.
So for clarification, the only time the $25 permit fee comes in is if we identify a route, for example, along East Main. Then we would pay them $25, and that's to cover some of their engineering costs to make sure that we can go on those poles. We don't pay that every year. It's just on a construction basis. As to the fee, I understand that all providers are being charged the same, and that they gradually are moving all providers to this new agreement, which has been in compliance with the state of Colorado PUC. So it's a cost of doing business to be on the poles.
All of the providers were at $11.72, or the higher up they were on the pole, they were at less, and being charged at $2.38?
My understanding doesn't make any difference on the level that you're on the pole. There were some older agreements that for years were in place. Now they tell me all of the providers are moving to this new agreement.
New 14.
And, Councilman, Rick and I had asked when we first went and met with Empire Electric, when we were talking about the first pole attachment, that we wanted kind of favored nation's rate, like whatever your best rate is per pole attachment, whoever it's with, we would like that. And we were told at that time, well, jeez, we're getting away from that. We want to charge everybody the same amount. So, you know, $14 per pole doesn't sound like a lot of money, but if we hung all of our fiber infrastructure throughout the city, it would really add up. So it's, you know, like Rick said, it's, everybody's got to pay this amount, but...
And it's at their discretion to raise this whenever they see fit?
Pretty much. I believe they can take a look at their cost. It's really about, since Empire's a co-op, it's about reimbursing their cost of doing this extra work, because in theory, they wouldn't be doing this work unless we're requested to get on the pole.
Right.
Now, still covered in this agreement, let's say we're going to go down a route that has 10 poles on it, and two of them are out of compliance and need to be changed. Then we'll be coming, there's a fee to replace that pole. That's in addition to the things we're talking about.
Who pays the cost of the new pole if you have to change the form?
The people that trigger the need for it.
Two things can happen. In some cases, you can simply get a taller pole, and sometimes they'll just do the incremental cost to the change, or they can have you pay the whole cost, which some have been as much as $10,000, $12,000 a pole. So that's part of this whole process, is going through the evaluation, whether to go aerial or go underground. And a lot of times, this make-ready and pole fees is what determines that we're going to go underground.
So is this something that's universal now across the state, where everybody, all the public utilities are now going to be charging?
No.
$14.10?
No. It's, I think that all of these electric utilities have a pole attachment agreement, but this amount is a local amount. It's what Empire's determining.
Compared to other places in the state?
I was going to say, is it comparable, or?
The agreement, the verbiage in the agreement is what has gone through the PUC. As Shane mentioned, each local electric co-op has different costs for different things, and that's what the $14.10 comes from.
But do we know if this $14.10 is comparable to what every other public util, or every other co-op is charging for their communities?
I do not know that. I know as a general rule that Colorado fees are higher than, say, some of the other states, but I couldn't...
Empire Electric does an inventory of their poles every year. Is that how it works? And then they charge all the people that are hanging on their pole? How many poles do we have in our city limits? Do we have approximately, what do we have?
Bobby, I'd be totally guessing. It's got to be in the hundreds.
Probably in the hundreds or low thousands.
I think they had at one point, through their whole service area, something like $11,000 or something, but I, it's totally hearsay. I don't know for sure.
Okay. Well, it's disappointing, but I don't think we have a choice. So, are there any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the new pole attachment agreement with Empire Electric as presented, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Carlson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Sheik. Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. It's harder to be the bearer, it's hard to be the bearer of bad news. All right. Agreement passed. All right. Next new business ordinance, 1230, series 2017. Mike Green.
This is a correction of an earlier ordinance, and we're asking that this be approved tonight and set for public hearing at the next appropriate meeting. Back when this ordinance was enacted in 2013, we had a lot of people living in RVs around the city, both on private property, public parking in the streets. And this ordinance was intended to get a handle on this housing situation. When the original ordinance was done, the word "or" somehow got placed in in some part of the process instead of the word "and." And so what we're asking tonight is to simply correct this, so that the word "and" replaces the word "or." If you took this ordinance the way it currently now reads, as was discussed, a tourist couldn't park his RV on Main Street to go into one of the coffee shops and get a cup of coffee. When you look at the minutes that were attached to the board, or to tonight's meeting, it indicates more along the lines of what I'm saying. The purpose of this was to limit people living in RVs for extended periods of time on city streets, and/or to limit to 30 days their use of them on private property. The current ordinances that exist is probably as a practical matter, and Chief Lane can speak to this pretty much unenforceable. And so staff is recommending to council that you approve the ordinance at first reading and set it for a public hearing on the date specified in the packet.
Right. Would you comment on that, or expound on that?
Yeah. And Mike is right. The original problem that we had was people putting an RV in a driveway, putting a porch on it, putting whatever on it, and living there. And we had that all over town. So the original thought for this ordinance was that we could control that. The original thought for the ordinance was not parking of vacant RVs on the street.
Okay. Are there any questions by council?
I have none.
How many, how big of a problem is this now? I mean, are we getting a lot of calls?
Not a tremendous amount. We have one area of town where it's an issue right now. Other than that, it's not, not a humongous or a big problem. We do deal with it on individual bases, but it's not, not like it was when there were people living.
And when that problem was happening, wasn't it because there was a shortage of housing?
Yeah, at that point in time, the, there was a lot of people coming in and doing that. But a lot of it, at that particular point in time, was just family members living in another family member's driveway, or a family member living in his RV out on the street in front of a house. So...
And I would add, I mean, we just had, yesterday, we took a complaint from a homeowner that was complaining about a neighbor that had people sleeping in a camper, you know, and so I've just, it's, we're saying it's still...
Even in a camper?
Well, it was, I can't get into the details, but it was, there was also people sleeping in a shed, and quite a few places on the property. So it still comes up. I mean, there, in 2013, we just had, I think we had a real issue. We had a lot of complaints. We had people who were renting out their RVs for either family members or strangers to live in. And so it was causing quite a few neighborhood issues at that time. But yeah, so we just had an issue yesterday, though. So it still comes up.
Have you been enforcing?
As far as not, not living in an RV over a certain amount of time on property yesterday.
But nobody's turned somebody in for parking on the street?
Well, we did get that complaint maybe a month ago or so, and that's at the time when we had to pull that up to ordinance and discover that a typo had been made, because staff didn't realize that it said, you can't do this or do this. So yeah, so we did get that recently, that complaint, which is why...
That's already, that's getting approved, but it's ready for the, your boat and everything?
Yes, sir.
License plates?
There's another ordinance that we have that talks about in order for a vehicle to be, again, is more of a land use and trash and weeds and things than it is a model traffic code.
Yeah.
Parking traffic ordinance, but that's been, I think that's what, a standard we've been using, licensed and insured, and...
Vehicles and whatever that's on the street that don't have current license plates on it. Most people, soon as they see the orange tag on there, go get a license plate for their vehicle. But we do tag quite a few.
And it has to be operable too, right, Chief? Drivable?
I'm not so sure it has to be operable. I'm sure, I think it only has to have current license plates on it.
We've sort of, and I say sort of, if it's in pieces, like you've got vendors and it's on blocks, maybe that's really not operable. But if you were to, some of the cars that are licensed and insured, they look like they run that far, was my understanding. We let the license and the insurance speak, that it's, if you're willing to spend tires aired up, in other words, there's not, we're not allowing a car missing, or an engine out of it, and things like that. We're...
Mike, I do have a question on the word "or" to "and."
Yes, sir.
Or other properties. And yet, when it comes over, later on, it says anywhere, if you're living in it.
We break it out into different sections, sir, and what I'm remembering is originally the first paragraph talks about, "No person shall park and occupy any RV or park trailer as defined such and such on any city of Cortez, street, alley, or other city property," including but not limited to parking lots, lands, et cetera. And then, and then we have a rebuttable presumption. There was another section, I think, which went to the parking on private property. I think this one just deals with parking on public property.
Well, to me, that seems a little confusing. If we're going to fix the "and" to the "or", and we, and it's spelling it out there, that this is talking about on city streets or alleys, and then we come back and say, but if you run accord to it on private property, that seems like maybe that should be corrected also. Either change it in the first part and say, "Any city streets or alleys or private properties or any place in the city, if you run accord to it, you're living in it." Or take it off over here on the presumptive and say, "If it's got a cord running to it on the street, then you're living in it." To me, that seems confusing too, but I don't mind fixing the "and" or the "or." And I don't think that really clarifies it all that well.
When you see the cord, that only gives you a reason to check and make sure that it's not just being plugged in for the convenience of the owner who may live there, or, but we always check and make sure there's not people living in it. We don't just go out and say, well, you're hooked up here.
Because you could be living in it with the generator.
Well, actually, what the tickets we prosecuted for, we had witnesses who said we saw people sleeping in it overnight. In other words, this is pretty much a complaint-driven thing. It's not something where the officers are driving up and down the street. It's where somebody calls in and says, hey, there's a family living down at the end of whatever street in this RV parked in the street. They got lawn chairs out. They got a carpet down under the front door. They're at home. They almost got the pink flamingos out. And then this is, this is, the rebuttable presumption is so the officer, when he writes the ticket, has something to go on to tell the judge that, hey, this is what I saw. The ordinance says if we see these things, then people can come in and say, no, I'm not living in it. I was just charging the battery, or I was doing this. But we've not had, to the best of my memory, anything that was based just on those observations. We had neighbors testifying that people were living in it.
No, but that's the only sentence that really ties it in to the fact that if it's on private property. Even in the scenario you just listed, you said, "Park down on the street." So I'm just wondering why we can't separate the private property from the street, and the only place that the private property is mentioned is when it says about the cord. But...
No, there's another, a whole entire different section about the private property.
No, there's another, a whole entire different section about the private property. In section 18A2, that's where it talks about private property. This whole section is talking about city streets. City streets, alleys, and city property is what it's talking about, parking on them, not parking on private property. I, I guess I'm not following where you're...
That's right, I'm confused.
Okay. Maybe I'm confused. I thought that's what, what we just said, you can't...
But they can't live in it even on private property, can they?
They can stay in it up to 30 days.
Right, they can stay, but they can't, I can't live in my RV for six months, even if it's parked in my yard.
We had actually some, we had some trailers set up inside a fenced-in real estate where they were renting them out to people who were not related. Um, we had one instance where somebody, I think, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, actually moved somebody else's trailer in on his own property and let them set it up like a mini trailer park.
So that's illegal, though?
For 30 days, but it's illegal for anything beyond that.
But I, but I can't, I can't have the Browns living in it for 30 days, and then they move out, and the Smiths move into it for 30 days, and then they move out. So it's 30 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether it's on private property or whether it's on public street.
It's zero on public streets.
Okay.
30 days on private property.
And if I'm remembering right, it was like in a year period, so somebody could stay in it for 30 days and a 12-month period?
Period.
My mother-in-law comes every year for 30 days. I put her in the trailer. It's okay.
And when your mom comes, you still have another...
My mom, I have to let her in the house because I've already used the trailer for 30 days.
Okay. All right, is, is, did that clarify that for you, Tim?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
Arrest his mother.
She wouldn't go peacefully.
And then we had you arrested for...
Yep.
...mother abuse, or mother lodges. I know we have some people here that are here to speak to this issue. Would you like to?
Oh, I wanted to say...
If you'll, you, you need to come and state your name and address. Either one, that one name would work.
I'm Karen Galloway, resident on Colorado, work at Ten Colorado, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council tonight. What I'm urging you to do is be good stewards for the future of our community. I realize that this is probably a typographical error, but I, and that it does need to change to match. But I think it would be in the best interests of our community to go with "or," so that we don't have more and more playgrounds parking long-term on public streets. I think you were all very aware of what was going on in Paradise Village before you had those streets paved. There were lots of long-term trailers, boats, all kinds of vehicles parked down, and I know you guys had to send out some kind of letters to get that taken care of so we could pave those streets. But the neighborhood looks very rough. I think it sets a bad example if you're trying to get people to come to Cortez and rent where we're here, that we have lots of people storing, who come and go because they're hunters. We have a trailer, and when we bring our trailer in, we load up, and then when we come back on the weekend, we unload and we move our trailer out away from our neighbors. We have other neighbors that have built spaces in their fences to bring their travel trailers off the street. I think it looks nice, and I think it would be in the best interest of our community if you guys really gave that a good thought, instead of just thinking, "It's easy, let's just make it the 'and.'" I know police don't have time to go out and hassle people, but I think it's very similar to what we're talking about with trailers that are being lived in. If you have a complaint, then the police could go look. You know, if I say, "Here's a photograph of this trailer that was moved out in the street in April, and it's still sitting there in September, never moved." That's long-term parking, to me. They're not paying rent, you know, and moving your trailer out to a place they could store it, or on another piece of property. It's just a place of convenience. And it is a small concern right now in our neighborhood. It's three or four trailers in one block. Most of the neighborhood is not like that. But I think if you allow it, more and more people will do it, like the folks that live across from us, just moved here from out of state this spring. I don't think they even know, but because other people in their neighborhood are parking their trailers that way, so do they. And, you know, I could have made a fuss to them, but I was trying to be a good neighbor and not be ugly. That's why I went to the city to see about what kind of ordinances it might be, and if I could get assistance in doing it in a mature, friendly way. So I was very disappointed to think that it would just be, "Let's just take that 'or,' make it the 'and,' and problem solved."
Would anybody else like to speak to this? Yes.
Uh, you and Crook live on the same block, and I moved there two years ago, and part of the reason I moved back to Cortez was because you're doing so much to keep the town looking nice and stuff. And when I moved back, I checked the ordinance and saw that I couldn't park in the street. A, I liked that. B, I had to redo my fences to get it in, so I parked it at a friend's house for a while, and then I'm parking it in the yard now. Like she said, that one trailer's been there all summer. And I agree with what, everything she said, and would like to point out like she did. You are going complaint-driven on people living in them. We could go complaint-driven on if they're parking in the street long-term. Leave it up to the neighborhoods to somewhat police it and let you know what's going on. But I also feel people are renting places to put their trailers now and they're not using them. Now that we've made this public knowledge, I can see some of them saying, "Well, I'm going to stop paying a, a place to store it, and I'll just park it on the street then." And I just want you to consider what it's going to do to the town if we have trailers parking in the street all summer, or part of the winter, or whatever. I don't think that's in line with your beautification product, projects you're trying to complete here, and I'm really happy with what the city's done in the last 10 years. Because I used to live here, and it was getting trashy, so I moved out to the county. And then the neighborhood I got in started getting trashy, because there's nothing in the county. And now I moved back, and you're going backwards, instead of staying the same or going forward, with trying to keep things nice here. I'd just like you all to consider that, and thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Council, any other, any other comments?
I guess one thing that comes to mind, and I do value you guys getting up and speaking your mind, is that, as far as permanent affordability standpoint, people that maybe can't afford to extend their property or their fences, or afford to store their, their vehicles elsewhere, how do we, how do we broach that subject? And I think that's always something that crosses my mind, is that should people that cannot afford those luxuries not be allowed to have something that, that gives them satisfaction in their life? And I, I always come back to that point a little bit, so...
If I were to respond to that, I would say, "If you can organize your travel gear and load, or, or if you're a little bit, you can afford those things. Can you afford to park in some grounds, or in a large area of the property, and you support your license to, to take it out of the interest of whoever, you know, it's not, those are luxuries."
Right. Yeah, and that, you know, and I'm not sure there's an answer at all. It's just something that I ponder when I think about these types of things.
I think the thing that's, I, I understand what you're saying. I, it certainly is much nicer to look down a street and, and have that street clear, except for people who are parking temporarily because they're visiting or, or whatever. But, but I also wonder what kind of slippery slope we're, we're setting course on if, if we say that, okay, you can't park your trailer there, then, well, you can't park your pickup there, because it's big, and it's an eyesore, and it's a, you know, it, it creates a line of sight issue, or, and now we can't, you can't park your second car there, or whatever. And if, 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 if I were in charge of a city and got to make all the decisions about how everything went in order to maintain a certain standard, and the same for you too, I'm sure that there would be, you'd look at it from a, from a little different perspective, that we're running the show, and so we can, we can have people sign on to these things knowing ahead of time that if you choose to live here, you, you can't do X, Y, and Z. But we live in a community where we have a very diverse population who has a, a very diverse set of needs, and it's, trying to balance those sometimes is really hard, really And, and there's always going to be somebody that's not going to be happy with the decision that's made.
Have you looked into other communities and what they're doing, of the, of the various areas that I completed, some of the communities they're doing? I can't say that for you, or...
Well, I, Shane, maybe you could address this. I, I know Shane talked with the city manager over in Durango, because you guys had, had quoted their, one of their ordinances, and, and in your discussion with Ronald Blank over there, can you share what he shared with you?
He just said that they have different zones in the city, so, um, excuse me, I'm getting over this cold. So they have certain zones in the city. That's really for maintenance purposes, for snow plowing, or, or street sweeping, or whatever. They may have no parking on a certain side of the street, so they will move everybody and enforce that, but they don't specifically target RVs, is what he told me. So I, I saw that ordinance where they said that it can't be unoccupied, or it can't reside in that right-of-way. He told me it's not something that they're enforcing, so I can't reconcile that with the code, other than, I, it doesn't sound to me like they do specifically target RVs.
So that they're doing kind of, in essence, what we do, then?
That's right.
Yeah, I, my daughter lives over there, and they don't enforce...
They do not, Tim? They do not? Okay.
I'm sure if somebody complained, it might, but...
Okay.
As a general rule, if you, my daughter has an RV and they park it on the street.
Well, yeah, he just said, you know, there, there may be an HOA in Durango that doesn't allow those, and, you know, as we all know, HOAs can have a lot more restrictive covenants than the city has. But the city itself isn't enforcing that.
So, you know, we've checked with the community that's, that's within spitting distance almost, and, and, and they're dealing with it the same way that we are, so...
Karen, other than aesthetics and line of view, what other problems might there be if you parked a trailer, boat out in the street? But might, maybe ask Roy this. Is there anything else other than, you know, aesthetics, you know, you know, what it looks like, or, or line of view, you know? Is there anything else that might create a problem by having a boat, or a trailer, or an RV out there?
Well, you have a, depending on the size of the motor, motorhome, takes up more of the street. But we have that problem with companies who do lawn mowing. Their, their trailer is much wider than their pickup, and it's parked there. We have, we don't, we had, do not have a truck parking ordinance, so you can park a truck on, on a side street. So that's an issue. What it does, it, it narrows the traveling part of your street, and that, to me, would be the only issue.
Have you had any accidents in the last couple of years with this kind of thing?
Boy, I'm sure we have, Bob, I can't tell you how many, nor can I tell you where they were at, but I'm sure that, that, but not a, not a huge amount, not, nothing that's out of the ordinary. And it's no more than, if you have a car parked on the street, or, or whatever, it's, it's nothing, no more than that.
Is there any kind of restriction that if it's beyond a certain size, so that it takes up too much space on the street? I mean, is there have to be, does there have to be a certain amount of clearance in order to...
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
So how is the city handling, like, street sweeping and snow plowing with these vehicles?
You get, you get plowed in if you leave your car or whatever in the way.
They go around?
Yeah, I, I can answer that. So for the snowplow, basically, we do, that's why we do the passes in the center of the street, and we really can't get to the edge, because there are vehicles and things. And then the, for the street sweeping, we really try to hit most residential neighbors, neighborhoods just once a year. You know, the street sweeping is really a lot more for our main thoroughfares, and, um, yeah, there we go, around them. But, you know, some folks that, especially on our regular routes, are pretty good at removing their vehicles anyway, because they know that there is getting swept, and they don't want to get the rocks, and, you know, it's a bit of a pigpen. When the street sweeper goes by, it kind of throws up a lot of dust, so I think people find they may not have to wash their car if they get it out of the way.
All right. Well, if there, if there are no comments or questions? Bill, I'm sorry, I saw your hand, and could you step to the podium, please?
Uh, so, we're talking about...
You have to step to the, we have to make this...
So I'm assuming this, we're talking about long-term as opposed to short-term over 30 days for RV parking in the streets?
We're, we're talking about allowing any trailers to park on the street for any length of time.
Any length of time.
The only limitations are, that we have are for people staying in an RV on either, on, on private land. They, they can't park their RV and live in it at any time on the streets.
And the ordinance, just to be clear, the ordinance we're dealing with here only deals with parking on the street and living in it. Everything else that we've been chatting about is valid and, and needs to be discussed, but it's not part of what we're doing tonight. We're only dealing with living in an RV, which has a definition someplace, which includes a lot more than just a trailer, on a public street or public property. So you couldn't live over in the parking lots on West First, or on West First Street over there across from Citizen State Bank. You couldn't, that the city owns. You couldn't park there and live in it. You couldn't park on the street. You couldn't park in the parking lot out back. That's all we're talking about, is city-owned areas tonight, and living in an RV on those areas.
Well, the point I was just going to bring up was, is that it implies a subsidy by the city if you're taking something like an RV that you would normally pay to park in some sort of a storage facility, and then use that streetscape for long-term parking. But it is, Mike just pointed out, it's not really relevant to the ordinance. It was just more of a comment to what was being discussed afterwards.
All right. Any other comments? Thanks, Phil. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Sorry, actually, I do have one question.
Oh, okay.
The heading and the language in the original ordinance, does it say "and" in the heading and "or" in the ordinance, like how it is in this copy?
The ordinance that you're looking at right now says, "An ordinance prohibiting the occupation of recreational vehicles or parked trailers on private property and city property." Amending ordinance number 1179.
No, no, I'm sorry, let me clarify. The ordinance as it stands right now, when it has the heading on it like this, does it say right here where it says prohibition against parking and occupying, but then in the language under A, it says parking "or"? Is it written that way for the heading "and" for the...
I would have to go pull the blue book, but to me, I'm remembering it saying "and" in the heading.
Okay.
And that's what you'd be making it say in the new ordinance.
Okay.
So it's parking "and" inhabiting, or occupying, I'm sorry.
So it just changes it across the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Wherever it appears, it changes it, so, okay. All right. Going once, going twice?
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion, I can, for approving the first read, ordinance number 1230, series 2017, amending ordinance 1179, series 2013. Ordinance prohibiting occupation of recreational vehicles, or parked trailers on private property and city property in public here for September 26, 2017.
One second.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Shee? Aye. All right, so there'll be a public hearing then on September the 26th. All right, we have an addition to tonight's agenda, which is 7C.
We're not approving that.
Which is a resolution authorizing the city finance director to amend the accounts. Kathy's not here.
She's not. She wasn't filling in, so I'm going to fill this one. So, sorry for the...
So, sorry for the late notice on this, but this is kind of hot off the press for us. So the city is an E-rate spin provider, which means that we can invoice the federal government for providing internet service to like schools and the library and we get a percentage of that back. But E-rate, and I'm about on a limb here, may be the most inefficient bureaucracy in the federal government. I mean, it is, I can't explain how cumbersome the process is, how many times the city needs to submit invoices and submit them again and get a new password and then go do it again. So we've been fighting, trying to get reimbursement for E-rate for years and working with a consultant, Terry Storm, to really help us navigate that process. And she contacted Rick and I last week and said that there's a workaround for us, at least for future funds, which is if we had an ACH account with the library, so a library checking account that they could direct deposit into, then instead of waiting eons for these checks, we could just get a direct deposit, maybe even this month still. So she suggested that we set up an account for the library. We have a historic library account, it was an amazon.com account, and basically when we sold books through Amazon, that money would come back into this account. And so instead of starting a whole new city checking account, we would just like to change the name of that account as well as add Eric to it because the library director, when the Amazon account was set up, was Joni Howland. So we're basically asking counsel to allow, to adopt this resolution. It would put Eric Ikenoy on the account as well as the usual partners, so we'd have to go down and sign that. And then the reason why I just put on tonight's agenda is because I talked to her on Thursday or Friday last week, but it takes so long for this stuff to happen and it's critical that we get it done this month. I wanted to buy us another two weeks because the odds of us doing this and submitting everything 40 times before they get it are really high. So that's.
There's evidence of E-fund, E-rate funds being deposited in direct deposit accounts more rapidly than waiting for?
Yeah, I believe, it's supposed to be streamlined process. And she said that really if we go through this, at least with our future funds, we won't have to go through the long, the long drawn-out wait to get reimbursed for this stuff. So it should help streamline. And quite frankly, it's little risk to us to do this if it doesn't work and we've already got the account. We're just, it's not, it's a little bit of paperwork on the south side, but I think it's well worth it compared to all the paperwork that we face when it doesn't work out.
And so this account could be used for depositing any funds?
Well, it's a library account.
So it would be, Amazon funds could be deposited in this account still?
That's right. That could still happen. And we're not really doing that, we haven't been that active on this account in a while. Yeah, it'd be a library account. And on the other end of that, the day that it's deposited in this account, we're fine to sweep it into the normal city account, so it really is just.
It's just a pass-through?
Yeah, it's meeting the requirements of, of the E-rate.
Actually getting paid?
Yes.
And so how far in arrears are they? I mean, can you, are we hopeful that we can get them paid that money too?
I can tell you that we are, I think that they still owe us money back to 2010.
My gosh.
Yeah.
How much money are we looking at?
This has been.
Yeah.
They are well behind.
Does that represent a lot of money?
It would represent a good chunk of money for our fiber fund. So Rick and I and Kathy have worked, and again, the reason why we really started using Terry Storm more is that they've got these portals, they've got, it's just a mind-numbing, unrewarding experience to try to get reimbursed. From what I understand, talk to Eric Ikenoy, most small libraries don't even apply for these funds because it's such a labyrinth and they never get the money, so it's.
To waste the time?
Yeah, the pain threshold, but for us, it is worth the pain threshold because it could be a significant amount of money. So we're sticking in and fighting it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions, counsel?
Sounds like housecleaning to me.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I make a motion, othering the city of Cortez finance director to amend the current demand deposit account for library amazon.com funds to Cortez Public Library for the purpose of receiving E-rate funds.
Second.
McGoughlin?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Shee? Aye. Good. All right, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances, no other items of business. Is there anybody else out there that would like to address counsel? I thought maybe you were getting up.
Paul Sam.
All right. There's no city attorney's report, but I'm assuming the city manager has something.
Just really quick, I'd just let you know, we had, for the HR director position, we had five internal applicants and I think around about 10 external applicants. And so it's, we've got some good people to interview, so we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks, having an interview. So I'm excited to get our next great HR director on board.
What's your, what's your projected time for them to actually be a seat in the office?
Well, that would depend on who was hired, you know, how much notice they give their employer. If they were internal, it may actually go a little bit slower depending on, you know, where they're coming over from. So I, we're gonna do that in two weeks, I'm hoping maybe so in eight weeks from now to have somebody in the position.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I've got.
Right, any city council? Of course.
I had a golf advisory board meeting and I apologize, I forgot my notes in the car, but a quick recap. Year-to-date profits are up, course is getting great reviews, continuing discussion on accessibility and, I don't know, that's about all I can think of this week.
Oh, thank you. You reminded me of one. So I am having a discussion with the neighborhood this Thursday.
Right. Yeah, 5:30, correct?
Yeah, 5:30, we'll host it at City Hall and is to just continue to engage the homeowners on golf course lane to discuss accessibility to the golf course. So there are varying opinions as to what that should look like. And so, in the military, they had hazard pay and I'm wondering if counsel wants to consider that for this. So we'll see, I'm hoping.
Councils, welcome to joining the meeting on Thursday at 5:30.
Yeah. So we'll host it here and I, my hope is that, you know, because I think all these folks, I know I'm on an individual basis and they're all great people, and I just hope that they can all, you know, sit down and really come to a reasonable outcome. I have asked Mr. Keenan Lovett, you know, he's a local attorney, but I've asked him to kind of help facilitate this discussion because he lives on the golf course, just not in this area. And so I think he brings in a good understanding of the issue and he's a well-respected person, he knows everybody out there. So kind of my goal on Thursday, unless we can come to a solution, which I doubt, is to try to establish a small working group of these homeowners to sit down and work through the issue. And Keenan said he would kind of help, you know, work with them and of course the city would be involved, but, you know, at the end of the day, this is gonna really be, I think the city is gonna likely support any reasonable solution that the neighborhood can kind of come together on. So I'm just trying to help facilitating, you know, get them in a good process to where that reasonable solution is more likely.
Any other committee reports?
I went to the economic development meeting, it was Nate. The first topic that we talked about was the broadband in the county and the county commissioner didn't really sound very promising. He said basically nothing was happening and that they're waiting for some private company to come up and build the system. I don't know whether that's his opinion or whether that's the county commissioner's opinion, but it didn't sound like they were very hopeful on what was happening with the fiber in the county. And the second item that we had run was deferred maintenance for the national parks and there was a big discussion on that as far as the economic impact it would have, say, if the roads to Mesa Verde became impassable and that was to shut down. So they're talking about legislation to get more money going for the deferred maintenance. One of the comments was deferred maintenance means that they took the money that they were supposed to use for maintenance and spent it somewhere else. So I hope if they come up with another way of getting money, they block the somewhere else. And then the most exciting part was Jody Powers did a presentation, she's the new economic development director, spokesperson, and she's fantastic. She's really excited about what's coming up and she did a little presentation about what's new in the county. And a lot of it was really what had to do with the really positive things that have been happening like on Main Street and with business development and all that. The other thing she's looking forward to is trying to look forward to see what's gonna, what's gonna come in the future. And she really wants to get the Economic Development Board actively getting memberships and providing a service that makes it worth them getting their membership. So I, seems real love, real positive. I really like her anyway, but she did a really good job presenting what she wants to do.
Great. I thought maybe you were gonna say that McCade was going to chip in and take care of all that deferred maintenance for the park?
No, they didn't say that.
Gosh, I don't know why not. Are there any other committees? Historical, preservation?
I actually didn't make it there in time.
Oh, okay. 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 At the workshop, we discussed Hurricane Harvey relief and the outcome of that was that we would simply put some contact information on the city's website and on the city's Facebook site for those community members that might want to make a contribution to either Hurricane Harvey or Hurricane Irma relief. And Ty also made a very good suggestion that as we go through the granting process, the city does accept applications and does award minimal grants to various nonprofits in the community that, once those awards are made, that we might also put that out on the city's website and Facebook page for members in our community that might want to make some kind of a contribution to those entities to support our own community. So that was a great idea. We had quite a lengthy discussion on RV parking, which we talked about again at the council meeting. And then we adjourned to discuss two items under two separate executive session discussions. I also, before we adjourn tonight, I'd like to invite counsel this, not this coming, well, this coming Thursday, the library's going to do, in conjunction with Sunflower Theater, has a documentary on, tell me the name Shane, of the movie on Thursday night, do you remember? It talks about young men and what our culture's.
Is that skinny living or something like that?
Or the mask on your face or the?
Yeah, the mask, yeah, the masked face.
Yeah, the things that our culture does to, it kind of inflicts on young men that might make us, that might set them up for some problems and some failures that maybe we need to kind of reassess and reconsider. So if you're the parent of a son or the grandparent or just an interested adult, you might want to go. I do remind you though, if you're interested in going to the Sunflower events, even though this one, there is no charge for, they like a donation, but there's no charge for it, but you still should sign up online for tickets because they're getting so much attendance at some of these things that even the free events, if you don't have a ticket, you may not get in. On third Thursday, which is the 21st, at 6 o'clock, we're gonna have a recognition of Dr. Bob Hiles contributions to the community. He is retiring on October the 31st and.